I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. I'm gonna just pop around on the agenda a bit, if you don't mind. I'm gonna ask if Mr. Peter Quimby would come up first, please? He's on our agenda under Grants, Gifts, and Donations.
I am delighted to present the town with a gift from the Governor's Academy of $30,000 to go toward the debt service on the new police station. I said this last year, I'll say it every year, we are just delighted and honored to be a part of the Newbury community. The relationships that we have with the town, with the town committees, with the police department, the fire department, mean a great deal to us, and so we're delighted to be able to help the town in this way. So, thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Governor's Academy is a big part of what Newbury is, and specifically Byfield, and it's, you know, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is...
I motion to accept.
Happens when I go out of order.
Thirty thousand dollars from the Governor's Academy?
I'll second it.
There's a second, okay? Motion to second. Any discussion besides thank you once again, Mr. Quimby?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, let's see if I can stick to the agenda. So, next, we're gonna have public comment, and that is to receive oral communications from members of the public. Members of the public may address the Select Board for up to three minutes. The Select Board shall not engage in discussion on topics raised during the public comment, but may choose to add the topic to a future agenda. This agenda segment will be limited to 15 minutes. And do we have any public comment tonight? Okay. Peter?
Yes.
Come on up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Come up here, can you?
This is?
Come up to the podium here.
Yeah, that's even better.
And state your name and your address.
Okay.
Thank you.
Peter Erickson, 48 Northern Boulevard. When I saw the article about parking at 49 Northern Boulevard, I wrote a letter to the editor. When I found out there was a meeting tonight, I addressed that letter to the Board of Selectmen and delivered it earlier this morning. It's a short letter, and this is my public comment. For 26 years, we have lived across the street from the parking lot of 49 Northern Boulevard. We're disappointed to see that there has been a dust-up over the continued use of the property for paid parking. The parking lot in question, managed for years by Geraldine Dorr and recently by Tom Ryan, does not in any way contribute to excess traffic on our streets. Conversely, it absorbs, according to one neighbor, as many as 60 vehicles. By my count, it's only a dozen at a time, but that would have been coming here anyway on summer weekends. Neighbors on 16th Street understandably object to cars turning around in their driveways. So, how would they feel about cars blocking and even parking on their driveways in the absence of this lot that, in their terms, can help contain up to 60 cars? I understand that Mr. Ryan has continued a prior arrangement in support of Mad Martha's restaurant next door. The Dorr-Ryan lot has also served as free guest parking for neighborhood residents. Both restaurant and residents have long been hampered by onerous and unnecessary off-season resident-only parking ordinances on Northern Boulevard, and so for us, this lot isn't an amenity. It gets pretty dark out here in winter, although lovely in spring and fall. Summer traffic is going to happen, and we need places for them to land. It's the price we pay for living on Plum Island year-round. So, let's give our neighbor, Tom Ryan, a chance to manage his lot with the reasonable limitations of excess summer tourist traffic. Therefore, it is important to the general welfare of our neighborhood that the Select Board allow Mr. Tom Ryan to continue to offer paid parking in the manner that has been previously offered for decades. So, in closing, I just want to say that I find it odd that someone came up with a number of 60 cars, when there are probably, you know, 10 or 12 that can park over there at a time. I find it hard to understand how additional traffic in the side streets can be the result of off-street parking provided by, now by, Mr. Ryan. Remember now, this is a major access to the beach, right across the street from that parking lot. People are gonna come here. The town of Newbury has put a crosswalk there. There are signs pointing that allow public access to the beach. People are gonna be in that area. Isn't it better to get however many cars Mr. Ryan can park off the side streets?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Is there anyone else here for public comment?
Oh, sorry.
And then the gentleman behind you, do you wanna just come up, stand up behind him? And I think I saw somebody over here. Do you guys wanna just line up? So, if you can, because, again, three minutes, and you'll hear the ding. Thank you.
My name is James Stewart. I live at 22 Old Point Road, and I guess I had just have an initial question. Given that this entertainment license for Sunset is further on down the agenda, will we have a chance for public input during that discussion? Or do I have to say what I wanna say about that now?
Actually, I think when we come to that agenda item, well, we have town council here tonight.
I mean, I'll do it now, if you want, or...
Why don't you do it now?
Or reserve the right to do it later.
Do it now.
So, I'm at 22 Old Point Road, which I'm approximately a quarter of a mile north from the center, down Old Point Road in a northerly direction. Regarding the live bands that have been playing down in the center over the last couple of seasons, the experience at my home has not been a good one. I don't think people realize how the sound carries out across the sand, and when I'm out on my deck and I have visitors and I'm trying to have a conversation or a meal, it's extremely disruptive, even to the point at times where I just give up, I go inside, I shut all the windows, and put my own music on to just get away from it. Now, I think we all know that there are sporadic events on Plum Island where we make noise. You know, there's Plum Fest, there's maybe some holiday events, maybe a resident has a beach fest, you know, musical, but I think generally, they're permitted as one-offs. They're definitely sporadic. I don't think people have live bands at their house every week on an ongoing basis. So, I think they're sporadic and that they're not repeated as a matter of practice over time. For those reasons, I recommend that any outdoor music be banned, with the exceptions of unique permits for a special event, as justified to the board, and so that it is regulated to be just occasional. We minimize the number of occasions. It's regulated for the loudness. I'm not sure exactly how you do that, but there's probably precedent somewhere. And it is regulated for duration. I recommend three hours and never after 8:00 PM to keep a lid on things. I think that has to apply to small speakers, DJs, anything that's outside, because, what's a small speaker? I can buy a small speaker and blow the walls down inside my house if I just crank it up. Or a DJ or a band rolls in, oh, we have small speakers, there's no control. So, I'm in favor of tight permitting and regulation on this matter as deference to the community and the residents that wanna enjoy the simple peace and quiet most of the time in their neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Hubert Mulligan, and I live at 816th Street, right in back of 49 Northern Boulevard, where the parking lot is. And I've been there for 52 summers, and in all that time, I have never, never seen an issue at that parking lot. The issue I have is that folks come to Mad Martha, there is no parking for them, they're now down in front of my house, parking in my driveway. And the answer you get is, well, we'll only be here for 45 minutes. Well, that's fine, but 45 minutes on Saturday and 45 minutes on Sunday, and if this parking lot is open, they can go in and park, have their breakfast or whatever, and leave. So, I'm in total favor of keeping the parking lot open. I know that 816th Street is a busy street. We have folks that go up and down there doing 30, 35 miles an hour to get to Northern Boulevard. They have to slam the brakes on to get out and go on Northern Boulevard. So, I agree with Mr. Carlson, Peter, that I'm in total favor of keeping the place open.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Come on up.
Christopher Smith, number 17, 16th Street. I understand we only have three minutes. The original intent of the permit given for that piece of property was Kelly and then Valley Real Estate, and according to the Selectmen meeting, August 10th of 1982, the stipulation was it was no more than 12 cars, and it was, and the owner ran the parking lot. The owner was gonna be present to, again, cars coming and going. The original intent in that premise was not 30, 40 cars, and there was a number of 40 to 60. If you take 25 cars on one lot, 10 or 15 on Wendy's lot, and then you do the math, cars circulating through, you can get up to 40, 50 cars a day going there. And then you get another 20 cars a day circling the neighborhood, waiting for that lot to open. But the original intent approved by the Board of Selectmen, again, August 10th of 1982, was no more than 12 cars. I've got lots of different points here, but I'm gonna go to some of the other ones. I would ask that the town of Newbury institute their own rules and regulations, and that is regarding the Town of Newbury Off-Street Parking Regulations 97-7. Any type of residence, one and two-family, must have at least two spots per unit, and those parking spots need to be 19 by 18 feet per parking spot. So, go out and measure it and see how many spots you can get in that permit. We're not against parking. What we're trying to do is minimize 40 and 50 cars. If it comes down to 12 cars, I think most of the neighbors would agree with that. That's okay. And again, that the owners are, it's only the owners operating it. I think that, I think most of the neighbors would be happy. It's safety. I mean, we've had, we've got little kids on bicycles coming down the street. When you've got 20, 30 cars circling, waiting for parking to open up, it becomes a nuisance. When you get 20 cars, I'm at the corner of 20th and 16th Street, when you get 15 and 20 cars every hour circling, waiting for parking spots, they turn around in your driveway. It's a nuisance. Again, the parking regulations are there to reduce hazards to pedestrians and to protect adjoining lots and the general public. Again, this is the town's own rules and regulations. I think there are questions regarding public records. How long has this truly been a business? I mean, we hear it's been a business for generations and generations. I'm assuming that the town has records of commercial insurance showing that this has been an active business for the preceding three or four or five years. I'm sure they have access to tax records to show that this has been in business and in place, again, showing proof that this has been run as a legitimate, real business. I think there are too many questions regarding this, that, again, there's no rules and regulations. When it was transferred from one trust to another trust, there was legal representation that said, yes, it looks like that can be transferred, and I understand that. However, this has now gone to a completely new entity, and I don't know if it's good, bad, or indifferent. I'm just concerned, I live there. I've gotta deal with the traffic and the people and the danger.
Thank you.
Steve?
I'm Steve Banjin on 14th Street, and I hope this time when we discuss Sunset and Northern Boulevard, I sent some letters in, but I'd love to be able to talk about that for the audience that here, is here. But with the time I have right now, I just wanna talk about the master plan for a couple minutes. Specifically, the master plan's been released for public review. It's over 300 pages long. We've been given two weeks to review it. That's not enough time to review and comment. The so-called survey monkey sort of focuses you to talk on things that have already been approved in the context of the master plan, and you sort of have to buy into the options that are presented. There's almost no opportunity, except at the very end, to raise different issues or to, more importantly, vote down some of the proposals that are made in there. I'm also concerned that the history of this thing, there's a lot of reference throughout the document to the Community Preservation Act and trying to bring it back. The history in this goes back to how at town meeting, it was something like a 65 to 62 vote to bring it to an election. At the election, it lost 52% to 48%. After that, there was an attempt by some members on the Master Plan Committee, and I was one on that committee, to say, let's push the CPA again, but then there was discussion about how the people had spoken, and it was time to let go of the CPA. Yet, here it is again in this document. Now, I had asked repeatedly through time, what's the status of the master plan, and basically, it was being done behind, I'll say, closed doors, but that's just a figure of speech. There certainly wasn't room for public input. And then suddenly, it appears with just two weeks to try and review the darn thing. I would like, when I send my comments in, I'd like them to be available to everyone to read and not a select few, but at the same token, I'd like to be able to read what other people are saying, and that's not the way it's working out. But I do find myself wondering, who brought forth the CPA for the current draft edition? That's the Community Preservation Act. Who brought it forth for the current edition of the draft master plan? It wasn't me. It could have been a single individual. And if I knew who that single individual was, I'd recommend they be fired for trying to get around the will of the people. So, with that said, I'll also note, and this is just something about how town government in its work, and it's not a criticism of Tracy, per se, but just to note that how much power seems to be given to the town administrator. When one looks at through who's gonna do what in the draft master plan, a lot of it says Select Board, Planning Board, whatever, but so much of it ultimately comes under the town administrator's purview, and I think there's too much power being given ultimately to the town administrator. But let me stress again, this isn't a criticism of Tracy. I'm talking about the way governance works in the town. So, let me emphasize that and say it to Tracy again. So, with that, I'll hope that I can talk about Sunset and Northern Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you. I think this will be the last one. Are you, come on up.
Hi, John Peshara. I am now the new owner of 41 Northern Boulevard, notice the captain. My dad passed away a couple of years ago when it came to me. I am in favor of the 49 Northern Boulevard, Dorr, Ryan, parking lot. Tradition, yes. I can remember as a kid going there and helping Michael Larry, five bucks a car, this, that, then Jerry took over, all this stuff. But it also helps the small businesses down there, Mad Martha's, for their parking, free parking allows them, their revenue actually went up. I don't see a problem with traffic down there. They have a place to go. People come to visit Plum Island, they need a place to park. That's where they park. There's Mad Martha's, it's a five-minute walk to Dix, Plum Island and Provisions. It was Dix when I was a kid. I've helped park cars there, and my cousin Colin did it a couple of times. I don't see where the number 20 comes from. It only fit 12 cars in there. That's one lot. There's a small lot down below, I think, holds seven. We're not counting Wendy's, that's not part of our lot. Yeah, people turn around, they're gonna eat at Mad Martha's, there's gonna be a place to park. And like that was said earlier, there is a crosswalk there. People, the town wants people to park there for the public beach access. The lot that Mickey used to run, right across the street where there's a house there now, that hold, held 50-plus cars, and it was busy down there, it was fun, people were used to coming down there. Now, there's a place to park. People that come there now, have been coming for years, they know Jerry by name, how's Jerry doing? Unfortunately, I had to say, I'm sorry she passed away. Oh, you're gonna keep this lot going? Absolutely. We're gonna raise the prices, the price is gonna be the same, and there are a lot of repeat customers. There are a lot of people that are just taking day trips, and they see a place to park, a place to eat, let's go on the beach with the kids, get in the car and go. You know, I think it, I think it helps a lot. Do people turn around in my driveway? Yeah, I'm at 41 Northern Boulevard. They turn around everywhere. Kids are running down to Plum Island Provisions, candy, stuff like that. I'd just like to see the tradition keep going.
Thank you.
Lot of memories.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Stephen Osborne, 24 Old Point Road. Been here since 1973. I was there when the Angie's Gas Station was there, before our Sunset Club. The Sunset Club, Angie's Gas Station didn't make much noise. The Sunset Club is fine operation. I go by all the time, it's crowded, it's full house. My question is, why would they need entertainment? Is it gonna draw more customers? I don't know where they sit if they drew more customers, but it would definitely be an infringement on the neighbors. The noise travels on Plum Island, whoever lives here knows. I sit on my deck, and I can hear people on the bicycle going over the bridge talking. So, when you have a band playing, there's bands playing on the island, I don't know where they are, but you can hear them, and I think it's an infringement on the neighborhood myself. It's a pretty good operation, they're doing well down there, I don't see how it's gonna attract more people. Might, but I don't know where they're gonna go if they attract them. Thank you.
Thank you. So, moving on to boards and committee reports. I signed the PR 2325 for the Select Board and the PR 2325 for Julie O'Brien. Under new business, we have a new business license for Sam Bell Mag, I'm sorry if I messed that up. Properties, Robert Farden, DBA Ice Queens, 2 Northern Boulevard, it's a common victueller. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Is Jim here?
Jim.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I jumped down. Robert Farden. I'm at the next one. I'm sorry. Robert Farden, is Robert here? Come on up, Robert. Wanna tell us a little bit about your business?
Sure.
You know, on TV, just so you know.
Yeah, no, no problem at all. So, for the past few years, there was an ice cream stand operating there, Georgie Porgies. They chose not to continue operations. We've been pursuing a tenant, haven't had the fortune of finding a tenant yet. I have 16, 18-year-old daughters who didn't find summer jobs, so this is their summer jobs to exercise their entrepreneurial student.
Well done.
Their entrepreneurial spirit. They will have cousins, it'll become, have like an extended family affair. It will only be Italian Ices, ice cream novelties, soda water, and chips, no prepared foods or anything of that nature.
Okay, so this is the old Georgie Porgies?
This is.
Okay. Any questions from the board of the applicant? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My daughters, thank you.
I'm glad you've got them working. Okay, next is a new business license for Jim Sullivan of Watts Market, 6D Fruit Street, again, a common victueller. Hi, Jim, sorry, I jumped down.
Yeah, it's okay. Weiss is a convenience store, we'll, beer and wine, pizza at night, and just regular breakfast stuff, well, not breakfast stuff, but coffee and grab-and-go burritos.
Is the pizza oven working over there yet?
Yeah, it's working.
Oh, good.
We haven't opened yet, obviously, but I think we're shooting for Friday.
Oh, all right. Okay.
Fine.
Any questions on the board?
Do we have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Can I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
And then discussion, anything?
It's not a discussion, but I would just like to say thank you very much for your really generous support for veteran activity.
Oh, yeah, my pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Well, I can just add to that, well, not to that, but I remember when you first opened and you were serving pizzas, and you were, I don't, I hate, well, I'm not gonna say it, 'cause it might get me in trouble, but you had great pizza, so I can, I can kinda hardly wait, so...
I'm waiting for the pizza, yeah. It looks like a good oven. All right. All in favor? Aye. Good luck, sir.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, now we have a new business license for Alicia Catalano, DBA Music with Alicia, 89 Hanover Street, Music School, private lessons, birthday parties, groups, classes, and events.
Hi, my name's Alicia.
I like your name, Alicia.
Thank you. I like yours, too. I spell it the same way as well. So, I'm planning on opening up a music school for all ages. I'm gonna be offering group classes, private lessons, birthday parties, drop-off classes, so parents can drop their kids off, and I'll do an interactive group music class, and hoping to offer just a lot for the community. And I have over 30 students right now who I teach out of my house, and I'm just growing very rapidly, so I need a space to grow.
Great, yeah. I'll entertain a motion?
Motion.
Second. She's fabulous.
To accept. Second.
No discussion. I just, I'm just gonna say, I've seen her perform, and she's amazing with the kids.
Thank you.
There you go.
Awesome.
Thank you.
No questions.
Bill?
No questions.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Good luck?
Thank you.
I wish you the best of luck. Okay, we have fiscal year, 24 appointments. I have the Open Space Committee. This is a one-year term, going from July 1, 23, to June 30, 2024. I have Martha Taylor, Christian Grubbs, and Mike Carbone. I'll entertain a motion to appoint.
Motion to appoint, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have another appointment for Recreation Committee, a one-year term, July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2024. I'll entertain a motion to appoint.
Motion to appoint. Second.
Is Mr. Reagan here tonight? Come on up. I'd like to thank you for your willingness to serve on a...
Oh, I get drawn to this by pickleball, so I've got nothing to be proud of.
Read your letter.
Yes, we, we got a successful launch of pickleball in Newbury through the Council on Aging, which we're very appreciative of. We've had between 10 and 20 participants twice a week, so I'd say we're in good shape. And as a payback, I think I'd like to bring it to families as well. If we do move the facility forward, I think we could make it more, a little more family-friendly. I'm not just a one-trick pony, though. I'm an avid biker, and that rail trail's coming within the next couple of years, and so I think this would be a good place for me to help out.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I saw on the news tonight that there's been, because pickleball is so popular with COA folks and the elderly, it was actually on Channel 5 that there's been like a lot of medical incidents due to pickleball, and I have, I don't know if you remember, but I have been to your pickleball stuff, and it's a lot of fun, and I wanna continue it, so, thank you for doing that.
No suicide stuff. No jumping on anything still.
The Council on Aging just ordered a first aid kit, 'cause I guess there was a need, there was a need for one down there, perhaps.
That was, that was on my agenda, so we overlapped.
Awesome.
The rest actually, it's tribulating.
Exactly. Just in case, just in case.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next on the agenda, we have a Fire Chief search discussion. Tracy, can you give us, the board, a little update on this?
Sure. We, Chief Janverne had notified us of his intention to retire in early August, and as a result of that, we have a couple of options. Number one, you could conduct a search yourselves, if you are interested in doing that, or we could engage a Fire Chief recruitment process that would, that would involve us hiring an outside consultant, and they would do, excuse me, they would conduct an assessment center, they would do all the advertising, they would do the recruitment, they would conduct the assessment center, which would be made up of Fire Chiefs, so people who are very expert in that field, with the idea of providing the board up to three very well-qualified, competent candidates for you to then interview and choose. Usually, those, those cost anywhere between 10 and 15,000. I would, you know, solicit three bids, so we'd have a good one to choose. I would, you know, solicit three bids, so we'd have a good one to choose from. And if you wanna get going with that, we could get someone on board probably early July with the intention of completing the process in September. The Deputy Chief Wally Zeiler has offered to serve as an interim chief in between the time when Chief Janverne leaves and when you get the new person in place.
Right. So, I guess we have to choose if we want to interview ourselves or hire the, I like the idea of hiring the company because I worked that way once with the superintendent, I think it was Christopher Farmer, that's how we got him through a search, and it worked out very well. I don't know, what does the board feel about that, Dana?
Well, what was the first choice I, besides?
We do it.
We do it ourselves.
We do it internally?
Well, not internally, we post the job, and we screen the interviews, and we do the...
Resumes.
Resumes, rather, and we do it all.
And Trace, have you done any, I guess, how available, you said it would be someone who has been a fire chief in the past already? Is that the only qualif, is that a required qualification?
Qualification for what?
To be the fire chief.
Oh, no, I was referring to the people who are participating on the assessment board, so those people that would be reviewing the resumes, conducting the interviews with the chosen candidates, they would be former fire chiefs, the majority of them.
I gotcha. I gotcha. Thank you.
So there's gonna be a panel, this company will handle everything, they'll pull together, they'll do the preliminary search?
Right.
And get the three that they recommend to us to hire to the top, and we do that interview, and then we do that.
Is there, how's the market out there? How successful are we gonna be, do you think?
It's very competitive market right now.
Very competitive. I personally like the second idea, so.
Bill?
I do as well, and just to be clear, the hiring of the fire chief is a duty of the Select Board.
Yes.
So when Alicia says "we," she's talking to the Select Board.
Yes.
Not the town administrator?
Yes.
Leslie, what do you think?
I like option two. I think that, I wouldn't even know what kind of questions to have.
Where to begin, yeah. Jeff?
You know, it has changed. You know, it's a union firehouse now, you know, everything's a little different than it was years ago, so probably unions, you know, probably choice two is the way to go. It just seems kind of a little different to go outside, to hire our own fire chief, but, you know, only one vote anyway, so.
Well, I just think that, I've worked that process before, and it really worked out well. All right, so I'll, what do you need for a motion for me? Do you need a, just a direction, direct you to, so I'll entertain a motion to direct the town administrator to solicit bids for a company to provide us with a search?
Fire chief recruitment.
Fire chief recruitment search.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, next, under old business, we have a Municipal Building Committee update, and I do see the Chair of the Municipal Building Committee is here tonight.
Good evening, Bob Connors, 39 Annapolis Way, and I'm Chair of the Municipal Building Committee. Chairperson Greco, members of the Select Board. On behalf of the Municipal Building Committee, I'm submitting this final report regarding the Town Hall needs of Newbury, and will address the projected growth over the next 30 years. The Committee has met numerous times since its appointment, starting in September of 2022, and has generated over 1,000 pages of meeting minutes, reports and updates to the Select Board. The recommendations have not changed, but we want to memorialize them. The Committee has evaluated many potential sites for Town Hall, and various development options have been considered illustrating how a new Town Hall could be constructed on different sites. The Municipal Building Committee recommends construction of a new two-and-a-half-story Town Hall to meet the programmatic needs of Newbury. The MBC feels that this solution will best address current needs as well as projected growth, and will be the most cost-effective option. 25 High Road is the recommended site. The site is town-owned, has all utilities, including water, sewer, and it's adjacent to the fire and police station. 25 High Road is within the Newbury Historic District, which is located in the center of town, and is characterized by a wide range of domestic, civic, educational, religious, cultural and commercial structures, all which either face High Road, the Main Thoroughfare or the Upper Green. The buildings in this district continue to serve as Newbury's community center, and the MBC feels that this is a suitable location for this long-awaited Town Hall project. The schematic design phase of this project has been completed, and it's at Tab 2. Okay, we also, we have, we've received a historical evaluation of Old Town Hall at 25 High Road, that's Tab 3. The Committee felt that doing the due diligence at this early stage on what significant historical features 25 High Road has was better to be identified now to be able to start the process with the Historical Commission. Collier's project leaders have been identified as a qualified owner's project manager for the planning and design phase of a new Town Hall, and that is located at Tab 4. The next step recommend, the next step recommended by the Committee is to start the process for a permit to demolish existing structure, 25 High Road, in accordance with the Newbury Historical Commission's review process outlined in Chapter 65, the Historic Preservation Bylaw. This review process allows for a nine-month delay in issuing a permit to evaluate structures threatened with demolition. The intent is not to recommend that you tear the building down, but to find out what, if anything, any significant historical aspects should be considered on future use of this building in the future. The community has decided to continue renting town offices for the time being, so it's recommended to investigate additional space needs and incorporate them into future lease negotiations, and those space needs are at Tab 5. The Select Board should also continue pursuing other recommendations to address the Town Hall's permanent needs. On behalf of the Municipal Building Committee members, we would like to thank the Select Board for the opportunity to serve our community in this most worthy endeavor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Connors, and I would like to thank the Municipal Building Committee. Bob Connors, Eric Svan is also here, and John Keller. You guys have served the town well. You've got us in a good spot with this project. Should the Select Board in the future decide to move forward with another project, the lion's share of the work, at least space needs assessment and all that stuff is done here, I mean, you've treated us up nice. I know what you've done is a lot of work, and I, for one, am very grateful for what you've done, and on behalf of the town of Newbury, I'd like to thank you all very, very much. I don't know if there's any comments from the Select Board?
I'd like to add that Martha's been there every step of the way also, and I'd like to thank Martha Taylor.
Dana Alto as the Select Board representation have all, you guys meet early in the morning, you've done a lot. Leslie?
The only comment that I have at this point in time is, it's, this Town Hall idea has gone before the public on four different occasions, and it's been voted down four different times. It's, it's time to, at the last election, it was a two-to-one for a no. So I think it's time to rethink and not put the same, not put the saddle on the same horse again.
Yeah, well, this is just accepting this committee, we'll have to add how we're gonna solve this problem to the mother agenda. We'll have that.
Okay.
Okay. Bill?
I'd just add one minor comment. I know on Tab 5, you've tried to illustrate the Town Hall program needs numerically, Bob, and it's like 6,814 square feet proposed net footage. Underneath that, you show a subtotal of 10,072, and I think what's missing, it's not really a subtotal, because there's only one number above it, I think what's missing was the 3,258 grossing factor, walls factor, and so, that's the mathematics to get to 10,000. So if we need to pursue more space for Town Hall, that's the number we're driving at with attic storage. I understand that, I just think I want the mathematics to be exact.
Yeah, I mean, I think the simple version, when you're renting space, you're renting net square footage. When you're building space, you've gotta build grossing.
Gross, yeah, yeah.
There's a factoring difference of about 30%.
Thank you.
It's great, thank you so much. It's an incredible package.
Dana?
As a member of the Municipal Building Committee, I have shared my thoughts with the Chair, and I just, I don't have any comment on the report.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll entertain a motion to accept this report.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Martha, thank you too. Good night. Okay. So next is a new business license, this is a new owner, Thomas Ryan, DBA Plum Island Beachwalk, formerly wheelhouse parking, 49 Northern Boulevard, it's a parking lot and a water cooler.
Good evening, I'm Tom Ryan, nice to meet you.
Hi, Tom, one second. So, this is another, this was here last week, we tabled it for this week because there were some questions. I've asked Town Council, is here tonight, Matthew Provencho, to help guide the board in making sure that, you know, we do, we stay in our lane and we do what we're allowed to do. From what I understand, after meeting with Town Council, it was determined that this, the license that we're granting tonight is purely an administrative issue for the town of Newbury. If there are any zoning issues or anything that pertains, that's not in the Select Board's wheelhouse, those belong with the, the building inspector, and then I believe there's an appeals process from him, satisfied through the Zoning Board of Appeals. But I would like to ask Town Council to opine on that, if you could.
Good evening, Madam Chair, good evening, other members of the board, I'm Matthew Provencho, I'm here for Town Council.
He's frozen.
Could we turn him up a little bit, too?
He's frozen, too.
Oh, that's him.
No, he's moving, he's just stopped speaking.
Is there any issue hearing, man?
Yes, you froze, you froze.
We're gonna turn you up a little bit.
Counselor, you froze.
So I've investigated the matter at the request of the Chair, and what I can report to the whole board is that there's no specific bylaw or regulation that's been passed by the town that conditions the use of the property in this fashion in a way that can be regulated through this business license procedure. So what the board is doing when it hears the application for a business license, at least in this context, is it's receiving the information from the applicant, it's maintaining it on file, it's having an idea of what's going on in the town, but the use of the property, whether it's previously non-conforming or any other issue like that, are going to be regulated by the Building Commissioner as the zoning enforcement officer. It's up to him, if there are any plotting landowners, if any concerned, and people in town, they can seek a determination on enforcement as it relates to the property from the Building Commissioner as the enforcement officer, but none of that is before the board, and the action that the board takes will not change, waive or alter the zoning bylaws that apply to the property. So what's before the board tonight is just essentially to accept the application that's been presented to you with the information it contains. If you have any further questions about information, you can ask the applicant, you know, if there's any more information you want to get, but functionally here, in this context, you are essentially just performing a purely administrative duty to accept the application that's been filed, and by granting a license, you're not delivering any affirmative permission or structure for them to do anything beyond what's allowed under the zoning bylaws of the town.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions of the Councilor for that? Dana?
I do. What is that piece of property, what is it zoned as right now? What is the, what, you know, what is it? Is it, is it zoned as a business, or is it residential, agricultural? What is the zone for that lot as it exists?
Let me just look, I have the property card here, I'll see if I can identify the zone.
Mister, Miss Council, we have our building inspector, Mr. Peter Burnett is here. Peter, can you come up to the...
Peter, come on up, please.
Thank you.
The entire island is irregulous, it's residential, single-family, with a PR overlay. So, every commercial entity on the island is existing non-conforming, basically.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
I can't, what were you talking about, conforming? Every business on the island is?
Non-conforming.
Non-conforming, non-conforming.
Plum Island is strictly residential with the, with the PR overlay.
So it really is, it's an extreme privilege to be able to run a business on Plum Island.
It defaults back to an existing non-conforming condition that hasn't been abandoned for two years. In, in my interpretation, that's an allowable use.
I understand. I would just propose that maybe we ought to create some kind of business district, or we ought to, you know, the businesses that are there, if, I think each one could be addressed individually, whether we wanna zone, which lots we wanna zone as businesses and which lots we wanna zone?
So...
As agricultural or residential? I don't know, I mean, this is a, this is a huge leap forward.
Well, it's because it's not in our purview. So the Select Board doesn't oversee zoning, that would be the Planning Board, so we kinda have to stick.
Zoning Board.
And then the Zoning Board of Appeals.
And you would be, I mean, that would alter the PR, which is a, which is a tri-power agreement, so you have to involve Newbury Port in that, and it's, it gets pretty complicated to change that at this point, I think.
And this is something that the Select Board cannot do.
No, I understand that, I just, that would be, that would be my recommendation, but I understand, you know.
Martha's the town planner, she can speak a little bit more to this.
The Plum Island Overlay District was put in place when the Water and Sewer Project was done, and it was done in conjunction with Newbury Port with a lot of attorney input, and the intention was that the island would be by right, single-family, residential, any existing businesses that were in place at that time would be essentially grandfathered and allowed to continue, but any change to create a business district or something like that would be very, very much not in the spirit of the zoning that was adopted at that time.
You said existing businesses.
Existing businesses.
What was, what was that date that that took place?
About 2002, I believe.
2002?
Yeah.
So anything beyond 2002, really, we talk about, everybody's non-conforming, but they have, they do not have that grandfather clause that you're talking about.
So the existing businesses do, and, correct me if I'm wrong, if there was an existing business that was being changed to a different type of business, that would also be allowed?
Right. There is a special permit process in the PR that allows existing non-conforming commercial to go to another non-conforming commercial, as long as the zoning board didn't think it was more detrimental.
Right. For an example, you know, Angie's Service Station that was right on the corner of 2 Old Point Road is now the Sunset Club, and the zoning board made that determination that it was not more detrimental than the previous existing commercial use.
But that's not our purview.
I get it. Thank you, Martha.
Thank you both. Bill, do you have any questions?
No, I, I just... No, I, I just, um, I'm sensing that there is no legal reason to say no.
There's nothing to say no to.
There's nothing to say no to, okay.
Right. If there was, if the neighbors wanted to bring a zoning enforcement request to me, then that would be the way to do this.
Yes.
And I would deal with that part of it.
Thank you. Leslie, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Jeff?
No, well done. Thank you.
So I just want to make the neighbors know this, that if you feel there's a problem down there with too much traffic, or there's a nonconforming, or there's something that's not right, you don't believe it's, it's, you need to go to the building inspector, he's the zoning enforcement officer. Now I'm gonna ask the applicant if he has anything that he'd like to say.
Well, I just wanna put the neighbors at ease and let them know. I have an open door policy, I'm easy to approach. I actually like the neighbors down there. I love the neighborhood. I love Plum Island. So in the spirit of what Plum Island has done traditionally, keeping it a neighborhood area, I don't plan on doing anything extraordinary with the parking lot. I'm gonna keep it the way it is. There's no 60 cars, you couldn't fix 60 cars in three of those lots. I plan on keeping it between 12 and 14, which has been measured. And I spoke with the building commissioner about that. Made sure that it's, it's not gonna be hard to pull in and out. One of the concerns with some of the neighbors was people pulling out onto 16th Street. So now, by having two vehicles parked at that entrance, it becomes more of a driveway than an in and out. And you can put two cars behind it. That gives me my 12 to 14 cars. Anybody staying at the residence will stay in the lower lot, which will hold up to seven cars, but we're only planning on five to six, if that. We're not looking to overfit, it's not a parking lot, it's a residence. Where it's been used commercially as parking before, we came before you in hopes of keeping it that way to help out the neighbors and, yeah, make a couple bucks as a business. But at the end of the day, the most important thing to us is that our neighbors are happy. That's the end of it. And with that, I'd ask your permission. I also have my certificate of insurance here, 'cause I know that was requested. I don't know if you want me to hand it to you. It's been emailed to the commissioner. And, uh, that's all I have for you, unless, unless you have other questions.
Any questions from the board? Leslie?
No.
Phil?
No.
Oh, also, there is a handicap spot at the front corner of the lot now because somebody made a comment about that. And much to my chagrin, I, I should've thought of that prior to, but I didn't. So there is a placard or sign there now. And there's also a trash barrel at the corner of the lot because, as I understand it, some people like to leave their trash on the beach. We will-
We believe that, how that happens.
Yeah, well, if, if I see trash, I'm gonna pick it up. And I think that's kinda, unfortunately, everybody that lives down here, it's, it's a responsibility that we have to kinda take on ourselves for people who don't think that way. But, uh, again, this isn't Business Venture 101, and who cares about the neighbors by any means? Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Do you have any questions?
Dana, do you have any questions?
No, I would, I would just like to address the chief. She spoke at our last Select Board meeting. And I believe, and you can correct me if I was wrong, but you have been there. Your, your, your officers have been there. And you said in our last Select Board meeting that you thought it, it was at times an overcrowded, busy, dangerous situation for children and bicycles? And is, is that not what you said in the last?
So the, the issuance, like, the neighbors have talked about those cars circling, you know, circling the neighborhood, waiting for the lot, that does create a public safety issue for us. There are a lot of cars that do park there. I showed, um, there was one of the residents had sent me pictures of what the parking looks like Memorial Day weekend. I forwarded that on to the fire chief so that if he had any concerns, he could address them in his lane that way. But yes, if, if he's saying he's only parking X amount of cars there, at the last meeting, I had said, we don't address the parking concerns on the lot. We address the concerns that happen subsequent to people looking for spots in the lot and when they block driveways and turn around in driveways. So again, will, will the lot being there and not being there change that? I can't speak to that, that piece directly. But that area is a congested area, is what I was speaking to at the last meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And if I may?
Yes.
In the short three months I've been down here, I can tell you right now that if you took away any of the parking that you existing, that existingly have, your problems would just get worse 'cause you don't have somebody operating a toll coming over the bridge. So by having the extra parking, you are taking people off the street. It's not something I came up with. I've heard it from the neighbors, and it's something I've slowly started to observe. So again, with the neighbors in mind as a number one priority, that's how I'm approaching you and asking for you, for your continued permission to continue to operate the parking lot.
Thank you.
Actually, I, I thought of another, a question. And, and that is, some of the neighbors' concern was, was that through the last couple of years, when it changed hands and whatever, the, the manning, or, or, that's probably not the correct political term anymore, but of the parking lot, how does that work?
Well, we're gonna be there-
How do we control, how do you control that with the, the payments? I mean, I don't know.
We, we've set up-
It's like a bucket that you throw money in and just park, or?
We've set up a, a small Venmo thing, which, if I'm not mistaken, what happens is people just click on it, they pay. And if the lot's got more than 12 cars in it and it goes back to the Venmo, Venmo will kick back or something saying that you can't park there, it's, it's full or whatever. We also have, uh, my son, we've got Colin and a couple other people who have offered to come in and man it if we need them to. It hasn't been that busy. Memorial Day weekend was a little bit of a anomaly. Obviously, it's a holiday. But my son did a, a great job monitoring the parking lot. And the neighbors came over and helped them. They were all having a great time together, so. I know we've referred to Wendy's lot, God bless her. What a sad thing to have happen in meeting someone, somebody so wonderful for such a short amount of time. But, um, he had help, guidance, and as a result, we've kinda got a handle on what we're doing. Obviously, if we're not home and, you know, people start to pull in, it's kind of like an at-your-own-risk thing. But that's not gonna be the case most of the time that I can see. And this is a lot that's been in operation for over 30 years. So it's kinda like a common sense thing. Hopefully, you don't park so close that you can't get out of your car. The way that we have it set up and designated is that that won't happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, all in favor of approving this business license?
You can do.
Oh, oh. I'll entertain a motion to approve this business license for the Plum Island Beach Walk.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna let the neighborhood know that there is the Zoning Board of Appeals. If you have any issues, go through the building inspector and then it can get deferred up to the ZBA.
If I may, please, by any, any means, knock on the front door and let me know if you see me. If there's an issue, I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next, we have an entertainment license for the Sunset Club for Old Point Road. Music, small speakers. I'll entertain a motion to approve the entertainment license for the Sunset Club.
So move. Second.
Discussion. Okay, this also was tabled from last meeting. And again, I have Town Council here who's gonna help us, guide us through this as well. Hi. I assume you guys are from the Sunset Club?
We are.
Come on up. And state who you are and-
I'm Beau Sturm, representing Sunset Club at Four Old Point Road. And I also live at 52 Middle Road in Newbury.
Okay.
I'm Joshua Childs, I'm Beau's partner. He's gonna be heading this up, but any other questions up here also?
Okay. Okay, so, you guys had an entertainment license. And you're asking us, again, this year, for a license to have small speakers, low volume, amplified. Hours, I think this says noon, not to exceed 8:00 PM.
Correct.
Previously, your previous license that you've had with us was not to exceed 7:00 PM. As you know, we've had some complaints-
Funny enough, we probably built up some goodwill.
Yeah, we've had some complaints. So, do you wanna speak to those?
Absolutely. I think a lot of this, and I apologize for not attending the 13th meeting. I was completely unaware that for renewal that I, that I should attend, and that won't happen again. So I apologize to the board for that. And I think a lot of these questions would've been easily answered. We are requesting an entertainment license renewal, not a new license, which I think was a little bit unclear. And also, I think that the outdoor music, we, we don't do it very much. So seven days a week, we have probably, in the two years that we've been open, had live music outside 10, 12 times. I mean, it's not very often. And, you know, two of them were a fundraiser, a couple of them were Plum Fest. So a birthday, a wedding. So we don't do live music very much. And I think that that's a misnomer as well. And I know that our neighbors do do consistent, you know, our neighboring restaurants do do music consistently, and that has been a bone of contention, but we do not. We have, um, also, we've hired, uh, when we put the speakers in, which are six very small speakers, we hired a commercial, professional commercial sound engineer that very carefully placed these because of the zoning board and, you know, going through this process. They very carefully placed them towards the marsh, only pointing down, in order to dampen the sound as much as we possibly could.
Those are three outside, just to-
Is it three outside? And with that, too, I, you know, we haven't heard any complaints about anything other than this one day, Memorial Day this year, which was a, you know, the gentleman that just stood up, it was a crazy weekend. It's, you know, Memorial Day weekend on a beach. So other than that day, we haven't, we haven't received any complaints about that. So I just wanna point that out. And, you know, we've also done some, uh, some research, and we, we got a decimal level. And we did about a week's worth of, uh, you know, just trying to figure out exactly at what points the decimals were. So the Massachusetts Department of Bearqually generally states that the level of, uh, the, I'm sorry, the, the level at a property line should be, should, uh, be no more than 10 decimals over ambient. And so there's different criteria for that. Conversational level is 60 decimals. Traffic is 80 decimals. And large wireless music players at a maximum volume is 115 decimals. So on Sunday, the 18th, I went out with a decimal meter in our parking lot. And it was 57 decimals. On Sunday, on a nice day, we haven't had a lot of nice days, so I tried to choose days that the parking lot was full and that we were at, you know, a good capacity as far as guests. Uh, on Monday, the 19th, another beautiful day, it was Juneteenth, so people had the day off. At 7:00 PM, it was 58 decimals in the parking lot. 62 decimals were cars driving by. On Saturday, the 24th, we had a wedding on property. Like, when we were on the property with the wedding, it was 85 decimals. In the parking lot, it was 63 decimals at the same time. And, um, at our partner Jeff's house, which is on McLeod, which is right over the fence line, on the eastern fence line, it was 58 decimals. And oddly enough, his kid was playing in the yard and his kid and the dog were 109 decimals. And then at the top of McLeod, there's a, McLeod goes up a hill. At the top of McLeod, which I would assume that sound, you know, would, would travel up, it was 55.6 decimals. So that just, I just wanted to kinda frame up that I don't think that we're really overstepping anything with having at least outdoor speakers and very, 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 very seldom, only for, you know, events or fundraisers, having live music. I don't think we're overstepping ourselves, especially, you know, with the precedent of other restaurants that do more consistent live music. And then lastly, I'd just like to say that we wanna be good neighbors. We wanna be a place that Plum Island's proud of. We're really, really proud of how we've made the place look and, you know, what we've brought to the island as far as when you drive on, what you see and, you know, what the product that we, we really give you and the hospitality that we deliver at the restaurant. So I really, I wanna know, I want you all to know that we're, uh, we wanna be positive members of the community. We wanna be good neighbors. And, um, you know, our door is always open. So if anybody has issue with anything, please, you know, feel free to come. My name's Beau Sturm. I can give you my phone number if anybody would like it personally, so you can reach out to me. But I, I do think that we are staying within a very respectful, uh, part of the entertainment license.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Dana?
Beau, when you have the live entertainment, is that, do they bring their own amplification and speakers and all that?
They di-, uh, they do. We don't have any, anything like that in-house. So they do bring their own, their own-
Because that's not, that's not addressed in the application?
I mean, I, I don't know, but I would assume that-
I mean, the application for, I mean, this is the old application on dated August, expired on, you know, August of 2022. Four speakers indoor, four speakers outdoors. But that doesn't address the live entertainment?
Uh, we did apply for live entertainment, I, I'm-
That's this year. This one, says live music. This application to-
My, my, my point is, is if, if they're bringing in their own speakers and their own amplification, then that's, that's above and beyond your installed speakers that you have.
That's very much true. But I would assume that that's the case in most live music entertainment license, uh, licenses that are issued. I don't know of anybody who has their own equipment in-house other than concert venues.
So I think what Selectman Packer's point is, correct me if I'm wrong, Dana, is that although you control the sound for your speakers that you're playing music, I think he's questioning the control that you have over sound when the live music is playing, is that what you-
So live music is very different than the piped-in music that we play. We literally play it off of iPad, you know? And, you know, we have complete control over the volume then. And we do control it. So, this is another part of the thing. We actually, after the 13th, we have formalized what we've already done, but we've done it personally with every member of our front-of-the-house staff as well as in an email. There is no outdoor music over a conversational level piped in. Again, we do not play live music very much, so there's no, there's no outdoor music over a conversational level after 9:00 PM. So, that's 60 decimals. And then, that traveling would be much, much less. And then, there is, we put the garage doors down at 10 o'clock, and there's no music outside at all after our, after our 10 o'clock license, or our 11 o'clock license, but we close at 10. So, there's no music at all after 10.
Okay. I'm trying to pull up...
And that's only inside, not outside.
Looking for Roger Lloyd's letter?
Hunt, Kevin Hunt's...
Kevin Hunt's letter. And Kevin Hunt submitted a letter to us. It was specific about a reggae band that was playing at your facility, and according to Kevin Hunt, the decibel level was 74. At the time, I said, "I'm not sure if 74 is loud, not too loud or whatever." It's relatively not that bad compared to the numbers you're talking.
It's not. And we did, you know, I acknowledge that that day, that band was loud. Then that, that was Sunday, Memorial Day Sunday, and we had that band, we've never done this before. We had that band actually facing a different direction that they've never faced. Usually, we have the band, if we do have a band, they're facing towards the marsh, so the sound travels that way. The band wanted to set up on the other side of our decking, and it was facing the houses. And so, I acknowledge that that probably was, you know, and if anybody would have come over at that time, we would have absolutely turned the music down 100%. So, you know, I, I acknowledge that this, I think a lot of this is about one single isolated incident that will not be repeated.
I think you might be right.
When is the outdoor music supposed to stop on the application?
He's asking for outdoor music until 8:00 PM. Is that how it's timed?
Live music until 8:00 PM, but we thought that the common VIC license would, would encompass the speakered music, the piped-in music.
I think it does.
But live music would not exceed 8:00 PM.
Okay, so I need to ask the attorney that, Attorney Proventure, does that, does this common VIC license, does that cover his, the piped-in music?
It would be entertainment license that he's applying, or applies to, like, concerts, dance exhibitions, public shows. There has to be some kind of live performance going on for it to generally require an entertainment license.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for clarifying. So, it's, this is only about live music?
10 to 12 events a year.
So, we're really not talking about the small speakers?
That's my understanding as well.
Yeah. I, I would say, Madam Chair and members of the Select Board, that part of what you consider in issuing an entertainment license under Chapter 140, Section 183, is that whether the activity that's been proposed to be carried on under the entertainment license in conjunction with the other activity that's already occurring on the site poses difficulties under a number of things, one of which is ambient noise to the general area. So, I just want to say you can consider what activities are currently conducted in conjunction with the activities that are proposed as part of determining whether or not to grant the license.
Okay, thank you. Any, will I have any questions of him?
I, I have another question, and that's what Martha addressed us. That's why I asked you the question about the date, 2002. And the Sunset Club is, was created after 2002. And I have a, it's more, I'm getting back to the, I'm getting back to the zoning again. I, I think live entertainment by kind of definition requires to be at, in a, in a, in a business district.
No, that doesn't happen in Plum Island. There's no, there's no business district.
I understand that. But I'm just saying, the, I think that the spirit of line, that live entertainment is, 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 just about anywhere in the country is restricted to a business district, so that it's not interfering with local residents. And I'm not talking about the speakers in the restaurant. I'm talking about, you know, this, this is, this is, we're addressing an entertainment application license for live music in a residential agricultural zoned place that took place after we did in 2002.
But the zoning board of appeals approved that already?
There was a business there, Dan. Remember, it was...
Oh, I know. Angie, no, I'm not talking about the business license. We're, I'm talking about the entertainment license. There's, there's two, that's two totally different animals.
If I may, I can, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Hold just one second. So, the, the town of Newbury doesn't have the mechanism that you're talking about. It's, there's no business district down there. The matter before us tonight is an entertainment license, has nothing to do with zoning. The zoning is already appropriate. It's just the live entertainment license.
Yeah, I'm, I'm questioning whether we have the authority to even approve it.
We do. Can you speak to that, Attorney Proventure?
You do. You have, you have the authority to approve this. You've already received a determination, as the building commissioner stated previously, that the shift in the use on the property was not an intensification of the non-conforming use. If any other individual wants to seek an enforcement determination from the building commissioner to see whether that has proved to be true in the intervening period and that the activities that were proposed at the time the zoning board approved the change in use, they can do so. But what's being considered today is an application by an entity that has a lawful non-conforming use present on the site for an entertainment license under Chapter 140. You have the power to grant, deny, put conditions on, or just allow the application. And so, there isn't really a question. This, this kind of presumes that the zoning is in line. If there's a zoning issue, I think the building commissioner would have already stepped in. What you've got is a valid application that you should just act on as you see fit in line with the requirements of the statute.
Thank you. That answered my question. My next question is, some of the residents, the speakers, I now get the big picture. And the residents, a lot of the complaints, they did offer some suggestions to maybe mitigate when you do have live music. How it's projected, someone mentioned, you know, I'm not talking about the pop's half shell or anything, but, you know, maybe like, like some, some, some walls behind the band so that the, so that the amplification or the speakers is projected, they actually said, towards the bridge. You know, I, I don't know if that would be something that you would take into consideration to try and make this decision easier and appease, you know, the residents' complaints?
Funny enough, 11 out of those 12 times, we actually have. That, that one day that I see, seems to be the, the point of contention, we did not. We actually set the band up towards the bridge, as you say, and they have the container is in the kitchen, is the wall, the barrier, that is the backdrop. So, it really protects from any houses behind it, which is basically neighborhood because we're facing the marsh. And then, the other thing I just want to point out is we're not the only restaurant on the island that has live music, and we are the one who has it the least. So, other restaurants on Plum Island do have consistent live music. We do not.
I understand that.
I don't think we've, has the town received any complaints? Has the police received any complaints about live music playing down on Plum Island?
At their business, I haven't looked at the log for it, but I don't have any off the top of my head that I recall.
Alicia, I think some of the complications is some of the live music is more indoors at some of the other places. And I have a tendency to think that you guys have certainly been warned about what's going on and where there is other entertainment at Plum Island, that maybe the volume would be a real issue with you guys now for your outdoor entertainment, if you have it, and certainly putting it where that, you know, food plate truck is that's there, whatever. You know, now, now, it's, time is, you can lose it, you can make it or break it. So, that's kind of how I feel.
I have a question.
Yes?
I don't think you had any data about decibel levels for live music tonight.
I don't, because usually, like...
That's, that's fine.
No, I don't.
So, my point is, would you be willing to record decibel levels when you do have live music there?
Absolutely.
At least you're in control of the output volume at your site.
Absolutely. Also, just one other thing, I have the, our closest neighbor, neighbor, the person who actually doesn't have a fence line that protects his house behind us, Jeff Keem. He lives at 10R. I've made 10 copies for the board. He has written a letter saying that he's unbothered, and he supports our ability and, and, you know, how does he put it? To have, the right to have live music on the property. So, he wrote a letter in, in support of that. And he's the only property that does not have a fence line protecting his, his house, and he has two small boys.
Okay, you have copies for the board?
I do. Would you like me to approach?
Yeah, just give them to Tracy, and she can pass them down. Leslie, do you have any questions?
The only question I have is, I'm just concerned that it has taken you 10 months. You went 10 months without a license last year.
Again, I, I was unaware, it, we have other restaurants, and I was unaware how the entertainment license was, was handled by the town. And, and this won't happen again. With all the other licenses, we've, we got notification. We did not get notification from the entertainment license. And in some of our other, it's, it's connected with the liquor license or the common VIC license after we've already achieved the approval. When it's renewed, it's attached to, to the other licenses. So, I was just unaware, and I do apologize for that. I, I won't let that lapse again.
Thank you.
You do have them posted, so that...
Very much so, yes.
Thanks.
Of course.
Any other questions? Okay, so I think part, um...
Could I make a comment?
One second, Mr., one second. I think part of the, um... Well, I think the issue is, is the live music and the loud band that was there over the 4th, over the 4th of July, over the Memorial Day weekend. Mr. Hunt, in his, in his letter to us, made some suggestions about moving the bands away. Would you be okay with that?
Again, I, yes, because his suggestion is what we do in practice. We, you know, our anomaly was when we did not do that, and it seems to have gotten us to where we are right now.
Come on up. Can I, can I ask him to come up? He has something to say. You're speaking to this issue, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, and I want to submit these as my formal statement for the record. I forgot to do that earlier.
Okay, thank you.
We talk a lot about decibels, you know, with not live music versus none, no measures for live. But I really think someone needs to come down to the area that we live, which is a quarter of a mile away, and it's not just been once. It is very disruptive to the peace and quiet. And I don't know what the dynamics of sound are, but it's literally bouncing off the walls down around my house. And you're looking around, and it's coming at you from all angles. There are other residents that will attest to this, and you're like, "What is going on? This is cra..." So, the dynamics of the sound coming all the way a quarter of a mile away, I don't think are necessarily comprehended by any of these measurements that have been presented. So, I think until it's substantiated and maybe observed by third parties down where I live, what this is like, that a determination can be made that's respectful to the residents about at least the live music portion of this application. So, I would still object and put it on hold until some of these questions are answered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I think, I think the matter before us, I, just so the board is aware, I asked Julie to pull other entertainment licenses to be consistent with the town of Newbury because the Beach Coma exists on, down there, too. They have an entertainment license for an outdoor music. Again, it's Saturdays from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. So, theirs ends at 6:00.
Do they have, do they have live?
Just outdoor music, it says, but I think they do have live, live music. I think I've been there and have seen live music.
Thank you.
The other one is the Old Newbury Golf Club, which is in the middle of the marsh. And they have music bands. It's only June through September, on Fridays, 5:30 to 9:30, but they're not on the beach, and they're in the woods on a golf course, and they're not near anybody that can hear it. So, I think the issue at hand tonight is the fact that sound carries. It carries depending upon the wind. It carries depending upon the way the bands are set up. It carries the, the volume. What Mr. Stewart just said, you know, sound waves move and then they bounce. That's, that's something that is just, was a concern when you guys came before us a couple of years ago. The open air atmos, you know, the open, open air atmosphere that you have down there that sound would travel. So, what's the tenor of the board on this? What do you think? What do you think?
Madam Chair, you said the only other license on the island for live music is the Beach, is the Beach Coma?
Correct. So...
Alicia?
Yeah.
Once again, these guys have certainly been forewarned. One of the things, too, from being on the marsh a lot and around here, your predominant winds are westwinds during the summer. So, even though you're facing the marsh, the noise is getting carried right to Mr. Sullivan's house. So, it sounds like the loudness of the music is the issue, not just the direction that it's facing. So...
I mean, the only thing that I would say is that we have measured it, and I would invite anybody who would like to take measurements as well. We have measured it, and it is below a conversational level.
Except we're talking the live music.
You haven't measured the bands?
No, we haven't measured the bands.
That's what we're talking about.
That's the issue. This is the live entertainment.
We're not talking about, you know, the den. We're not talking about the traffic. We're talking about live music.
However, if somebody's having a backyard barbecue and they have a Bose speaker, it's at 115 decimals. And I don't know if we can be completely, we can be attributed to all music on the island.
Oh, I agree.
That if somebody's having, you know, of an acoustic guitar playing in their backyard with amplification, I mean, that, that might be attributed to us. Again, we've only done this a handful of times.
I understand.
But going forward, you said you'd be receptive to checking the loudness of the live band?
Very much so.
10 to 12 times a year when you have it?
Very much so.
And if it were excessive, you'd tone it down?
Absolutely. And again, you know, if, if, if you, if we're an issue, please, I'll give you my cell phone number, call me, and, and I'll make it, I'll make it right.
I just don't think you can regulate it when you give a carte blanche license. When a band shows up, every time, you can regulate what direction they're pointing, how loud their equipment is.
But out of 120 days of spring and summer, we're asking for 12, 15?
That's a lot. That's a lot of disturbances. It's a lot of my weekends trying to enjoy some peace and quiet on my deck and having to go inside along with my neighbors, who will attest to the same thing. And it's, it's not just been once or twice. It's a disturbance of the peace.
And you, you're sure that the Sunset Club has been...
I'm sure that it's live music coming from the center, that much. And I have been anecdotally assured that it's the Sunset Club on more than one occasion.
I would say that there are other, and not just, not just restaurants that have, have a live music license. There are other restaurants. There are other places, the beach music on Thursdays. There's, there's other live music on the island. And I think that we're getting attributed a lot of this because of one day.
And also, I will say once again, as the board deliberates, certainly, this is a whole different ball field now because they're duly noted about the loudness being a real serious problem continuing to be able to, if you get granted a license, to be able to keep it.
So, I think, Steve, did you want to say something? Can you, can you guys have a seat? I'll, I'll call on you.
Thank you. I want to thank Paul.
Yeah, thank you, Bo.
You sound extremely sincere.
Absolutely. I appreciate that.
I just want to say...
Don't, no, don't leave.
And don't leave.
I'm gonna sit right here.
Okay.
Hi, this is Steve Mangen on 14th Street again. And again, I remind the board that I sent some letters in to try and put down on paper what I was thinking. I realize this is an entertainment license, but in terms of noise in general, you know, the band could take a break, for instance, in which case, you're still going to hear the people that are there. And in general, you can hear the conversation of the many, many people that go to the Sunset Club, also coming into the environment in which we live. And I don't think we can focus just on the chords that the band is playing. We need to take, look at the whole package of sound that's created when there is an entertainment...
So, I'm going to stop you there, Mr. Mangen. The only matter before us today is the entertainment license with live music.
Right, and I appreciate that. I'm just saying that when there's a band playing, there's a lot of stuff going on at the venue because of the band playing, the people get charged up and that kind of thing. And I'll also note that the board has talked about how perhaps, you know, we can make calls as if there's a problem to be identified, or if we have a problem, we want to call it to someone's attention. I've made calls about this place specifically regarding to the merchandise shack, which is illegal down there because it's not permitted, and nothing has happened. It's been delayed, delayed, delayed by the conservation agent, the building inspector, and the planning board. Peter Pecos said during one meeting, "It's not legal to have that merchandise shack there." My follow-up calls about that, let alone noise, have been unaddressed as the wheel, big wheel keeps on turning. So, I'm not satisfied, in my mind, that if there's a problem with noise, it's going to be promptly addressed anytime soon. And that's the perspective that I have, why I'm concerned about the entertainment license. I can talk to you individually and send a note another time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for Paul. Paul, when's your next live event scheduled?
It's not.
You, you don't have one scheduled?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Only because you're on TV.
I'm just wondering.
It's not.
Do you, you think, because I, I just want to address the measurement portion of it. Maybe we would sometime in the... Maybe we would sometime in the near future get an opportunity to measure the decibels of the live music that you might be having?
Would you like an email when we do have a, a, a live music, an, an event booked with live music? And then you can come down?
I don't know if that's necessary tonight. I think what's, the matter before us tonight is an entertainment license. And, um, we have to decide whether or not we can, we can, like what Attorney Provincia said earlier, we can either approve this license, we can deny the license, or we can condition the license. So, um, what's the tenor of the board? Is, is there any feeling of the board to deny the license? Why don't I start there? I'll just do it like a struggle. Anybody feel like they want to deny this, this license?
I actually not made a clear decision on it yet, but could I get some clarification from you exactly?
You have a question? Yeah.
What is included into the entertainment license other than the live music?
Well, I'll ask the attorney. Can you explain to select woman Matthews what, what is included in this entertainment license? It's live music, music, and TVs. But I think it's just a lot, just the band, right? Entertainment? What is this?
Typically, what's permitted under an entertainment license are concerts, exhibitions, or public shows. So unless you have reason to believe that they're carrying on some activity beyond that which is requested, which all I'm hearing is that they want to have live music present on the premises, that would be the extent. You could also issue a license conditioned that the license is limited solely to live music and doesn't extend to other things and that the live music can take place on a given day between certain hours. You have pretty wide discretion in terms of what you're going to allow if you approve a license with conditions under the statute.
So if they were to be denied, they would only be not allowed to have live music?
Would they be denied? Correct.
Okay.
That's correct. They, they need the license to conduct the activity. I, I will tell you that the statute states that you shall grant the license unless you make a specific finding that the grant of the license, taken along or in combination with the other activities that were already occurring on the premises, cannot be conducted in a manner that protects employees, patrons, and members of the public from disruptive conduct, criminal activity, or health, safety, or fire hazards, or that the activity can't be conducted in a manner that prevents an unreasonable increase in the level of noise in the area, or that the activity can't be conducted in a manner that prevents an unreasonable increase in the level of pedestrian or vehicular traffic. So if there's an inclination to make a denial, you would, the board to get collectively needs to make a specific finding that one of those three criteria has been met. Otherwise, it would look like you are directed to grant the license and you have the discretion to impose conditions on the issuance of the license.
Thank you. I think that's the direction we need to go in because I don't, there's no findings here that it, is, we have standing to deny this. I think we just need to condition it a little bit to make it amicable to the neighbors. I think, um, I personally think that eight P.M. is late. I think that seven P.M., like they had previous, is better for me. I don't know how the board feels about that. Jeff?
I'd like to hear from other people.
All right. Leslie, how do you feel about seven P.M.?
Well, that was the original condition.
That was the original license, yeah.
Yeah. So I guess what I'm looking at is that they haven't followed the original license with the seven P.M. They've gone into eight P.M.
Well, no, they're, they're asking for eight P.M. How, how, how late do you?
We have not exceeded the, the parameters of the license.
Okay.
Do not.
So previously, you've only had live music till the seven P.M., correct?
Correct.
What about on Memorial Day?
Seven P.M.
That was seven P.M.?
Yep.
I disagree. It was eight P.M. I was out there with my watch.
So, okay, so.
I, yeah, if we're going to do some conditions, I, I, I like the seven P.M.
Seven P.M.? Bill?
Yeah.
And I just, I just want to reiterate what Town Council said. This has got nothing to do with your speakers and your system at the location, which I, I just want to reiterate that because according to Town Council, you only need the license for the live music. You don't need it for the speakers that you have installed and to run. Because you, you mentioned, you know, you, you can, according to my, what I think, is that you can run your, your speakers that you have there in place all the time until closing. Co- co- correct? Is it like correct, Town Council?
We don't out of the courtesy to our neighbors.
Right. But I mean, but, but you, you can't. The, the, the only restriction we're talking about is on live music.
The license before us is, which is like he's, Town Council has said, live music and other forms of entertainment. So I think the TV is here. And correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Provincia, if there was a live TV event and he had it outside and they were like, oh, I'm just, I don't know, an old boxing match or something, and they had it on TV, would that be considered entertainment?
It, it could be under certain circumstances, like for instance, if you were projecting it on a very large screen and effectively turning the area into a kind of drive-in theater or something like that. But it, it's very hard to say in the abstract because we would need to have a better idea of what exactly was going on. What I think the cleanest way to do it here would be is if live music is the only thing that's, a license is being sought for, the board can only approve that. And the applicant is free to come back if they have a different kind of activity that would look like a public show or other form of large-scale entertainment to be conducted on the property beyond the ordinary activities permitted under their regular license as a common victual.
Okay. So I'm going to strike types of entertainment. I'm just going to keep this live, live music for your license. I'm going to strike music in TVs. If you ever decide to put up a big screen TV, I mean, a really big screen TV and have cars pull up, you'll have to come back to us.
Okay.
Okay?
I have a question. When, when you have live music, do your low-volume speakers come into play at all?
No, they do not.
So you can strike that line right from this. That's, that's, you're not using that amplification for live music?
You're, excuse me. You're using what the band brings, correct? Okay, so that's, that's struck as well.
Alicia?
Yeah.
The only reason I said I wanted other people to speak a little bit too, and this is just a thought.
Mm-hmm. Well, we're deliberating.
I, I've been around a long time on the Select Board. I've seen a, a lot of entertainment licenses. I've seen some on Palm Island. I've seen them get conditioned. I've seen them do well in the beginning and then come under fire and then be revamped and allowed to, you know. So what I'm kind of striving for is the fact that I don't have a tendency to want to stop an entertainment license in the first year or so because it was getting, the, the bugs worked out. Because entertainment licenses are never perfect and they're never beautiful all the time. I mean, there's always, but does that mean we want to have a town that has no entertainment?
No, that's why we want to condition. We can't deny this without a binding.
So that's just my thought for the board tonight in the deliberations.
Okay.
I would just add for the board's purposes also, the grant of the license comes with the right to modify, suspend, or revoke it upon further information. So if you, if you grant a license and it doesn't wind up working out in practice and you get different information, you will still have the discretion to revisit the issue. So it's, it's not as though any decision you make here is set in stone until the permit expires on December thirty-first of this year.
Okay. So if, if we approve this with whatever conditions we decide to and there is a continuing problem and it's not addressed by the applicant, you'll be back here for the board again. So I, I think that eight P.M. is a little late personally on the island for live music. I, I'd like to see it go back to seven P.M. myself, but I don't know how the board feels about that.
I'd like to have it go back to seven P.M. also because they're still working the bugs out. So, you know, keep, and help the neighbors out a little bit.
Yeah. And if you have kids and they go to bed early, you know, less sound travels. How do you feel about that, Dana?
I, I think it's usually seven P.M.
Bill?
Yeah, it's consistent with the original entertainment license.
I'm certainly okay with it.
Okay.
I really like what Town Council said about that we can, we can re-address this anytime we want to. And I think that, like I said to Paul, I think you're very sincere about trying to get a, a handle on this in the future. And I want to ask Chairman Steve, are you guys, are you guys okay with, with giving this another shot to see if it can be addressed and possibly controlled? Yes, sir?
Yeah?
Yes. I'd like to see conditions as well on duration. How many hours can this go on? Five or seven? You got to stop at seven P.M., but can you go from noon to seven? I think it should be a maximum of three hours duration. And I think there should be conditions on the number of occurrences because I think that whatever he mentioned, twelve or something, is, and the majority of that's in the summer. It's going to be on weekends. Do the math. You've got a disruption possibly almost every single weekend of the three main summer months when you want to be outside. So I think twelve is way too much. I think you should limit the number of duration and the number of occurrences that are allowed during a particular season. Paul, what time do you open?
We open at three o'clock during the week and then Saturday and Sunday we open at noon.
Yeah, so.
Have you ever had a band from twelve till seven or eight?
No, and my only, I mean, I would be fine with like a boxing in parameters as far as the amount of duration. But when you, for a wedding, it typically is four to five hours. So, you know, we would want to be able to provide that as a service to the wedding guests.
So I think they could get an exception permit for a special event like that. I don't think anyone's trying to like ban completely, but let's get this under control, tone it down, and make it moderate so that it's tolerable for the, for the residents.
Thank you. Okay, so, and you say you have about how many of these a year? A dozen?
The only other thing that I would say in, in, in defense of that is that there are other people, including, you know, the closest neighbor that we have and, you know, the neighbors that are all over McLeod, who I could get affidavits from every single one of them saying that they are unbothered by this. So I just don't want to, I, I, I would caution that we're making any kind of determination based on, and, and again, I will give you my cell phone number, that, that we're, we're basing any kind of determination on one to two people versus, you know, we have not had a lot of issues. We have not. And I will address any issues myself.
Understood.
Madam Chair, can Steve say something?
Steve?
Thank you. I just want to associate myself with the points that Jim Stewart made. I think he's, it's tough to negotiate in real time on this kind of thing, but I think the idea of three hours is enough. I also think one can get special permits. When doesn't just show up for a wedding, for instance, is well-planned and a band, so a special permit's possible. And I also think, I think it's pretty amazing considering that Mr. Shapiro was here two weeks ago. Kevin Hunt has sent in material. There's the three of us here. We sent you an audio recording as well of what was happening on the sixteen team. So I think the concern is real. It obviously takes a lot of time to come to these meetings. But again, I think Mr. Stewart made some good points and I go along with them.
So to mention, to mention that audio recording that you sent, I listened to that and all I heard was birds chirping. Was that the, what, was the, sent to us? The birds chirping?
I don't know what that was, but that's.
When I got it and played it to myself, I could hear the sound of music, which was that Memorial Day weekend, I believe. So by the time we got sent in and resold it. It wasn't, shall we say, a high-quality?
Couldn't hear really much of anything else.
High-quality event, but.
Okay, so, uh, thank you. I'm not going to entertain any more, any more comment from the audience on this one. It's up to us to decide what we're going to do. I think we've heard enough.
I do too. And, and I, I, you said, you mentioned that you would be okay with, with the exception of special events, of, of, of a window, like what Mr. Stewart suggested? When do you think the beginning of that window? What would you like to see that window start?
Well, obviously.
If it's going to end at seven?
Obviously, I'd, as, as the owner of Sunset, I'd love to have the flexibility to be able, if it was boxed into a certain amount of hours, I can work with that because then I can, I can actually, you know, reserve any events that we do. Again, weddings, showers, birthdays, whatever, in, in that period, you know? So I, if it's four hours, five hours, I can say, all right, well, I have only this amount of time for that. But if it's only from noon to four, or only from noon to three, or from three to six, then that really inhibits our ability to be able to, to accommodate our guests.
I'm, I'm not personally me. I, I'm not, I'm not for putting this from twelve to seven, whatever. I think we stop the music at seven P.M. I think the nature of a band, if you have a band come, the bands don't play for eight hours straight. They just don't unless it's Live Aid or something like that.
It gets expensive.
It's very expensive. I, I think that that's just not going to happen. So, but I do think he needs the flexibility, if he has a wedding or something, to have a four or five-hour event. Even live music, this would even consider a harp playing or violin or something of that, of that nature. So I, um, but I do think it needs to stop at seven. I do think you need to be mindful of your neighbors. And I do think if the neighbors hear loud noise and it's aggravating to you, please reach out to the, to the owner of the club and you'll have to lower the music. And if there's a consistent problem, I don't believe there will be, but if there is, then we'll have to ask you to come back. That's, that's just the way I feel. I don't know, did the board want to add anything else to that?
I agree.
Good.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion, uh, no.
We have a motion.
We have in the motion.
So the only respect we're changing to eight to seven?
Well, let's see what the motion is.
Right. That's all, the only thing I'm changing as far as this.
So can you read the motion back?
We didn't, you just did to approve, the original motion was to approve this.
Okay.
So as this stands, when we got it, it was for eight o'clock. So now you're conditioning it to seven.
So I guess, um, what does she need for a motion for that, Counsel? Does she need me to rescind this motion and then make another motion?
You could, you could just move to amend your original motion directly that you want to issue at, to vote on an approval with the condition that the business not have live music that plays past seven P.M. And then if there are any other conditions you want to impose, you would include that in that discussion.
Okay.
So someone needs to move to amend?
I moved, who made, who made the motion?
Originally, it was Bill and Jeff.
I'll make a motion to amend the original motion to condition it with a seven o'clock stop point for live music.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah. I, I mean, it says live music and something else. I know you want to condition it to live music only, but you have to say you need to remove every other things as well?
Yeah, this is just for live music. Is that in the, the motion?
Yes. Yeah, live music, not past seven P.M.
Yeah. Live music.
Okay. And we, we talked about describing amplification to be used, but they had written down here, it doesn't apply to live music.
Correct.
Yeah. That's a, that's correct, yeah. The small speakers' low-volume amplification doesn't apply to live music. That, that's only your in-house system.
Correct.
So what, what I give to them is a license, so I'm going to have to go amend it. So I'll take out everything but live music and I'll make sure it says not past seven P.M. So this is what you'll be signing.
And Counsel, you agree with, with that? Would still allow them to do their in-house speakers from opening to closing? Correct.
Yes, I, I haven't reviewed the license that was issued to them as a common victual, but unless there are other restrictions and they're otherwise allowed to do it, they can continue to carry on any activity that's currently allowed on the premises. The issue for the board here is specific to their request to essentially host concerts on the property. And that's what the board is approving and that's what the conditions are directed at.
Jeff, do you have any questions? Any further conditions you'd like?
Had, did we make a decision on the amount of time?
No. Justice is going to, whatever they want.
Justice at seven o'clock?
Justice at seven P.M.
Well, again, to me, it's, it's, uh.
That's how, what I think.
There, I was from Monday to Friday, it started at three.
Yeah, they don't open until Friday.
And then until seven, it's only three to seven. Okay? Okay, that's, that's, hours of operation. So during the week, Saturday and Sunday, you start, you open at 12:00. So the question is, do you want it to be 12:00 to 7:00 or something other than that?
I think we leave it because if he has a wedding.
I would suggest leaving it at 12:00 to 7:00 because they're most likely to have a wedding, we start for a celebration on a Saturday or Sunday, much too.
I agree, I agree. I don't think there should be a front-end restriction. I don't think we need one. I think if it's a problem, I think we can readdress it. And I don't think it's going to be a problem, so.
Me neither.
That's my feeling on it.
Okay. So barring any further conditions? Barring any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you have your license.
Thank you very much.
Second chair.
Thank you for being a good neighbor.
Madam Chair, just a point of procedure.
Yes.
You voted to amend the motion, you should still have a vote on the motion as amended.
Ah, thank you. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the license as amended.
Motion to approve license as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, counselor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Is there anything further?
No, I don't believe so. Have a wonderful evening and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I hope everyone has a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, so, town administrators report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been notified by the Byfield Water District that water on Kentway will need to be shut off on June 29th so that they can repair a leak. So we are closing the town offices on that day. We also, I wanted to let you all know that we had a meeting with RJ Kelly last week in preparation for our bid process and discussed the possibility of acquiring additional space, given that leasing is now, I guess, being considered as a more permanent type arrangement where we've had, you know, employees working in the computer room, no meeting space downstairs, no vault available. As we're going to formulate the next bid proposal, those things will need to be incorporated. So we had a successful meeting with them and we'll look forward to moving forward with our bid. After receiving a number of complaints of both dogs on the Little League field, Pearson Field here in Byfield, and also receiving complaints that the field had been locked so that dogs could not be on the field, I had an opportunity to speak with both sides regarding the issue and research showed that the property has been marked no dogs allowed for many, many years, which is the same policy that you have on your Central Street playing fields. So the Little League Board did note that, and I quote, "The reasons for prohibiting dogs year-round simply outweigh any justification for allowing dogs on the field even during the winter months." We have also done research on how other towns and municipalities approach this issue and it seems pretty clear that more often than not, dogs are not permitted on youth athletic fields. That is even more so when there's a dirt infield involved, as dogs can do significant damage to the dirt infield even during the winter months. So given the recent funds that we have invested into upgrading that field that you approved through the opera program, it was the recommendation, and the recommendation of the Little League Board members and all their coaches as well, they had a comprehensive discussion. It seems to make sense to continue to prohibit dogs from Pearson Field at all times. I don't know if you've had any conversations with anyone directly, but unless the board feels like they want to reconsider policies, I think that would stand as it is currently. We talked about the fire chief recruitment, the Newbury Landfill Solar Project. Martha and I had a meeting earlier today with a solar and it looks like this much awaited project will finally be moving forward soon. Again, I wanted to let you know Matt Cooper will be leaving us as of June 30th. You know, I certainly wanted to thank him for his service.
Could we ask, Matt, can you come out so we can say thank you? Matt, thank you. We wish you all the best.
Can I have your money back?
It was, for the record, there was nothing about Newbury that was, is the reason for that. I had every intention of staying here until the retirement system got to know me better. A bunch of other factors completely independent of this place made that happen.
Thank you for your service. I wish you, we wish you all the best.
And I'll still be around to help, you know, make sure everything runs smoothly until you get a new veteran.
Good. We have an emergency, Matt, 911 call.
Yes.
Marlon.
Thank you, Matt.
And just a reminder that Eileen DeVoe is officially retiring tomorrow. We're going to have a little open house for her in the senior center from 1:00 to 3:00. Everyone's welcome to join us to give her a nice send-off and wish her well.
Okay, thank you. Correspondence, we've had some correspondence, Comcast letter, there's a change to service, put that right here. So. Dear Chairman and members of the board, we are committed to keeping you and our customers informed about changes to Xfinity TV services. Accordingly, please note the following change, STARS will be increasing its per-month price from $8.99 to $9.99 effective with customers July 23 billing statement. So that's coming. And then we also have some correspondence from Mass DOT. I don't know if anybody is aware of this, about summer, the Sumner Tunnel project, we've been down to Boston. Coming. The Massachusetts Department of Transportation has a comprehensive mitigation plan to address travel impacts and provide cost-effective alternative transportation options for residents and visitors ahead of the scheduled closure of the Sumner Tunnel from Wednesday, July 5th through Thursday, August 31st, 2023. So there's, the tunnel will be fully closed for approximately two months to facilitate work on the Sumner Tunnel restoration project. There is, travelers can utilize Mass DOT 511 to help review traffic conditions in MBTA's trip planner to view their public transit details. So that's coming for the summer, just to make your summer trips into Boston a little more aggravating. And then, so that's it under correspondence. And then I believe we have meeting updates. So under meeting updates, I would like to ask Martha, I was hoping to get her at the beginning of the meeting, but then I get her at the end of the meeting, to talk about the June 29th master plan meeting.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to remind everybody that we do have a meeting on June 29th for presentation and discussion of the draft master plan. And the master plan is available for review, it's on the planning board page, there's a link to it. There's also a survey, a question there, which will be available until June 14th. So there's no need to get it answered within two weeks or, there's a couple more weeks to do that. We look forward to having everybody come. It will be a presentation and hopefully an interactive and lively discussion, particularly about the vision statement and the goals and actions.
Great, thank you.
Seven o'clock at, in the community room at the library on Thursday.
You're retired. So I asked Julie to post a meeting for the board so that we'll have a public meeting posted for that in case we're all there. Unfortunately, I have a prior engagement, it's my mother-in-law's 85th birthday that I have to attend, so I won't be able to make it, but I will go back and watch it after. Any other meeting updates? Dana?
Newbury Town Day.
Yes.
I put some, there's some postcards, I don't think anybody in the room really needs to pick one of these up because we all are pretty familiar with Newbury Town Day. It is going to be, I believe, on August 26th. We, well, not we, the committee or the Newbury Town Day folks are really still kind of in desperate need of some volunteers in any capacity. If I may, I just want to, there's a, there's a, there's a website on here and it's newbrietownday.com, so www-newbrietownday.com. And there's a Gmail email address, which is newbrietownday@gmail.com. One thing that we are looking for is someone to head up the sporting events. So I am going to, I hate to ask Brian this, but maybe I'll go to the athletic director at Triton or something to see if we can possibly get one of the coaches there to address the issue of the sporting events. We're trying to organize, you know, boys, girls, baseball, softball, football, whatever we can do, combine teams together to maybe have a softball game or something, just some friendly competition. I like the, you know, the co-ed part of it because they typically don't get to do co-ed kind of things, so we're looking for that. And it's in progress and we have a little less than two months to put it together, so.
Okay. Well, there's a cry for help.
Jack, I know that, I don't know if you want to address the part of the event that you want to, that you're going to do with the movie night kind of thing? Do you want to talk to that or? Is that something that is not out yet because?
I'll promote anything that has to do with Newbury Days for the town.
So come on up.
Come on up, please, and talk about that because I kind of like that idea.
Yeah.
Jack, right, 37 Larkin Road. I approached Dave Hill of the BCAC originally about the possibility of hosting a drive-in movie at Central Street, a utilized area to take advantage of. That's morphed into working hard to make it the closing event for Newbury Days. It'll end with the band for about an hour and then a 90-minute family-friendly movie. We haven't marketed a name for it yet, certainly not a drive-in, it's not a walk-in or a drive-up. I'm not sure how we'll have a friendly time with that. We'll work with parents to come up with a generational gapping movie that attracts all, that'll fit in the scope of what we're trying to do. As Spencer Pierce Little closes down in the afternoon slowly, we hope to have a seminal event at Central and culminating in, again, a band leading into the, into a great movie. And in between, of course, some official recognition for all those who accomplish wonderful events during the day, which Dana's so went. And I mentioned, I just talked with Sean Reagan here, who you just appointed to the rec committee, and he's all game for running a pickleball tournament on, at Central Park for Newbury Days so we can mark already another event. So I appreciate anyone who's watching, if you please reach out through Newbury Days, your help is desired, wanted, and it'll be worth it.
It's newbrietownday.org, no, .com, right?
It is, the website is newbrietownday.com.
Okay.
And then the email address is newbrietownday@gmail.com.
Thank you.
And of course, I'll be in front of the rec committee on their agenda and after I, of course, run through the details with the rec committee for their use, of course, I'll be reappearing in front of all of you for the field use and I look forward to that presentation.
So what do you mean by, is it going to be a movie shown in the side of the building, outside, drive-up?
No, Dave Hill actually has a, quite a large screen that is more or less blown up. It'll be as typical as what you would see at a regular drive-in from your youth, certainly not as magnanimous, but I think it's 80 by 100, 80 by 60. It's significant, much if you all remember the events that were held at Central Park in the years past when there were bigger events down there. Orientation to some of the larger things was the back of the field where it trails off into the.
All right, so you're going to do this down the rec fields, not at the BCAC?
No, 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 absolutely no. The BCAC has a, actually has an event, they have a conflict with, that's why it morphed into, we're shifting the event to Newbury Days because of a conflict with the TTS players who already have, you know, had already scheduled a performance that night.
All right, so it's not going to be at the BCAC?
The final event as of this, as of this time for our discussion and the meeting with Heidi last night will be, again, Spencer Pierce Little will be closing down, so to speak, the vintage game and all the events that happened over there. The lead, the lag time will be roughly, Newbury Food Pantry operating out of the commercial kitchen from 5:30 to 6:15 or so. The band that was already scheduled to end.
And that's at the BCAC? Just to.
Yeah.
No, the band is on the field. Everything is at the field, Dana.
Oh.
Yeah.
Also, you're talking in the field house?
Yes.
I'm talking on Central Park Field.
Yeah, okay, thanks. I missed the first 10 minutes of the meeting last night, so I kind of, I missed a little bit of this.
All right, so you know what, let's not send it here because it's not quite final yet, so.
No, I, believe you me, it'll happen that way as soon as we walk through it.
Yeah.
Again, at Central Field, there'll be a drive-in, there'll be a band from about 6:15 to 7:15 and then Mother Nature doesn't darken the area until 7:30 by sunset. So the movie will play probably 7:30 to 9-ish and will be cleared by 9:30 or so. I have you on my contact list, of course, which after I work with the rec, I'll, of course, be moved to you and some manner of doing, there are volunteers to guide people for cars because hopefully we'll.
Okay, thank you.
Looking forward to it. Thank you for the floor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other updates?
I have an Essex Vet meeting tomorrow night, so I don't have any updates for that.
Is there any resolution about attendance to those events?
Not yet.
Not yet. We're waiting for a legal opinion.
His appointment's not over until, when's the next Essex meeting, tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Okay, you'll be fine.
But that's a really good question because I didn't even think of it. I have the same question too, so we have not resolved those issues.
Your appointment is until the end of June.
So if we wanted to change that, that would be a bylaw change, go to town meeting, right?
Correct.
Yep, because I think it's kind of stupid.
All right. No one, hearing no other meeting updates? Entertainer motion, oh, we have to, a motion to review and approve meeting minutes?
We don't have any, we just need the warrants signed.
Oh, okay, so the warrants, motion to sign warrants?
Second. How's that?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
No executive session, motion to adjourn?
Come here.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everyone.